Are you ready, folks? Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Folks, it's just 6 o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order if I could. Thank you.
Let's do it.
Good evening. And welcome to the April 14 Bennington Select Board Meeting. We are here in the third floor, at the third floor of the Bennington Firehouse. As we always do, I'm going to ask fellow board members to introduce themselves. I'm going to start with me. I'm Ed Woods. I am the current, until reorganization happens in about five minutes, I'm the current vice chair, therefore presiding officer for this particular part of the meeting. I will go down the line. Nancy, you're up.
Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Nancy White.
Hi, Sarah Perrin.
Hey, I'm Tom Haley.
Jim Sullivan.
Yeah. Good evening. I am Clark Adams.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Nance.
Welcome to the two newcomers, of course. They've all heard that from us before. We also have Stu Hurd with us. We have Nancy Lively with us. I see in the audience a couple of town officials. We have Dan Monks and Jonas Pivak, who are hiding for whatever reason, and Josh Boucher on camera for us. Thank you, Josh. I think I've got everybody there. So, as we always do, I will lead us in the pledge, if that seems fair to everybody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. As Tom always does, I will ask him to share the town's vision statement with us.
All right. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So now we can move into the reorganization part of the meeting. Since the seat of the chair is currently open, that'll be the first order of business is to elect a board member to fill the role of chair. So once we've elected a new chair, my role as presiding officer will be over, and I will let the new chair take the meeting from that point forward. And the first order of business for that new chair will be to follow the same process to elect a vice chair. And then we will get on with agenda item number three and forward, if that is okay with everyone. Does that make sense? Okay. So I think the first order of business will be that the process, and the process that we have studied up a little bit on, and the way that I understand it is, we will call for nominations for a chair, since that's the first seat that we will be looking to fill. We will take those nominations, and we will vote on them, and then we'll do the same for the vice chair. Does anybody have any questions about the process?
Is your vice chair?
Yes, ma'am. Just make sure your mic is on, Jackie.
Is that better?
Yes.
So, since I first announced my candidacy back in January, one of my goals for this year has been to make sure that this board moves forward constructively and with some unity. I've seen a lot of speculation about the upcoming elections this year on social media, in the local newspaper, and I'm concerned that that might present a hindrance toward us moving forward as one board. And so at this time, I'd like to ask that the elections for chair and vice chair be conducted by secret ballot.
Thank you. So is, are you making a motion?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor that we conduct elections for chair and vice chair by written secret ballot. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a call for all those in favor, please?
Aye.
One, two, three, four. I think we have, we have it. Any opposed? We have one opposed.
A two.
Two opposed, I'm sorry. Two opposed. The ayes have it, so we will conduct.
We aren't going to discuss.
Oh, we can, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I don't know that that's legal.
If the manager wants to weigh in on that, I would appreciate it.
Under the rules, if a motion is made to call for a secret ballot for the offices, it is legal to do so. Thank you.
Whether it's legal, whoops, sorry.
Go ahead.
Whether it's legal or not, I think this is going to raise a lot of questions. I don't recall we've ever voted by secret ballot before for chair or vice chair, have we?
I don't believe we have.
Well, if you're worried about people, what they're saying online now, imagine what they're going to say if for the first time, we're going to vote by secret ballot.
I wholeheartedly agree with that, Nancy.
We should be able to stand behind who we want for chair and vice chair.
And the other discussion?
I'll just say that I certainly can understand both sides of the issue, and I want to be, I want to be as transparent as possible, but recognize sensitivities that Jackie raised, so I would be inclined to vote for that, but I have no problem either way. Thanks.
I'll second what Jim says here. I think everyone in this town knows I have no problem opening my mouth, but I also said that I think we, we need to move forward and get things done, and if we can start off on a positive step, do so. I have paper ballots here.
I think.
May I make one more comment?
I don't have any problem with that.
I, I'm voting against this because I want to be fully transparent to the people that elected me and to whom I represent, so I just want to put that out there and for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Sarah's point is well taken. Thank you. So the ayes have it. We are going to move along in written ballot, secret ballot.
Excuse me, one question. Someone from the audience may have some say, is that permissible here at this point, or no?
I need to defer to the manager for that.
I think once the motion has been made and voted.
Yeah, 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 it carries it up.
Mr. Vice Chair, so my only question is that we voted, I think, before board members had a chance to explain why they felt the way they did. I wonder if it's possible that someone may have had their mind changed by the arguments.
Tell manager shaking his head, no. I have to defer to you, Stu, I'm sorry.
You have voted 5 to 2 to vote by secret ballot.
I have no problem going forward with that. My only point was, I think that, you know, after a motion and a second, then there's usually an opportunity for discussion.
As a person who voted for the motion, I believe you can make a motion to reconsider.
All right. I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Do we have a second motion to reconsider?
As far as being able to vote publicly?
Yeah, no. My motion, my motion to reconsider is, is to vote to have a secret ballot, so basically a second vote on the secret ballot question.
So unless you're changing your vote, you would not weigh in on reconsideration? Am I correct?
No, you would, you would call the question again if he gets a second, and people would vote again.
Gotcha. So we're calling the question for a second time. Do we have a motion to do that? Do we have a second motion to do that?
So that citizens can ask questions or comment?
We could.
I'm just trying to understand why we're doing it a second time.
Because Jim's point was that we didn't call for discussion prior to a vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor of reconsideration?
I'm going to call for clarification. So this is so that public can comment, is that correct?
Stu, is that appropriate?
I, I'm wholeheartedly very confused by this whole process.
It is, it's appropriate. If the vice chair believes that it's appropriate.
We're a transparent board. I don't have any problem with it.
There you go.
Is that what I'm voting on for just a public discussion?
You're voting for this, for this board to open up the issue again. So we already have a 5 to 2 in favor of secret ballot, but one of the, the members of the board made a motion to open the discussion again.
Okay, thank you.
And that can include discussion here and from the public.
Thank you.
Right. I think we have a motion to reconsider on the table, and we have a majority vote yes.
I have a question about the process. Does this mean we don't even nominate, so people don't know who we're nominating for chair? Everything's going to be a secret?
I don't know the answer to that. That would have been the next question that I had for the, for the town manager.
Nominations are public.
Say it again.
Yeah.
Nominations open?
I don't think so.
Vote on written ballot, is what I'm hearing from the board.
Well, yes, but you.
We nominate people publicly, and then we vote in secret?
That, that is a rule that the board can follow, yes. So you know who votes on the ballot? So if the vice chair would take nominations for chair?
Any more discussion? Do we have some input from the public? Yes.
Kate Cost, Bennington.
This is a mess. This is truly a mess. I want you to be brave. That's the whole thing about being on the select board, is being brave, and representing the community by being brave. This sets a precedent of secret ballots that undermines not only transparency, but your credibility. So I ask that you step up, be brave, represent the community that is also a brave community, and vote in public. What do you have to lose? Why would you want to be in secret?
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other comment from the public? No, going once, gone. From, from the board?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, she's 100% right. If you're worried about speculation online, and now we're going to work and vote in secret, well, it's going to be even worse. And again, Stu, this has never happened before, correct?
Not in my time, no.
Okay, well, I don't, I remember for your time, they never did either. If we can't, if we don't have the backbone to talk publicly about who we want for chair and vice chair, what are we going to have the backbone to stand up for any other way? I, I, I'm just, I can't believe we're even discussing this.
Anything else?
Sure, of course. Backbone. That's the first time I've ever heard that applied when you think about something Clark did, so thank you for a new experience. I have no problem voting out at all, and as I said, listening to Jackie and other things I've heard online, if this is going to create controversy of everything we're trying to avoid, so be it. But I also think nothing in the world upsets people more, it's been my observations, than change and challenging the status quo. I hear we represent people. I will be bold and say, maybe us getting elected reflects if people trust our judgment and our vision.
Clark, I would be careful not to lobby here, please.
Not to lobby me?
I'm asking to be careful.
Oh, I'm not, I don't mean in the sense of lobby. I'm just saying, in response to public concerns, that I think we all were elected based on people's faith, on our judgment, and our thought processes, and the idea that a secret ballot somehow was reflective of us not living up to that expectation, I think, is a consideration, but I don't, I don't think it's a correct one. And, you know, I will go either way, but I, I think the idea of us not being brave, or somehow being negligent or derelict, and what people expect of us is, I just don't think's valid.
As.
Go ahead, Jackie.
As the person that made the motion originally, I'll speak to that. I think while this may be unusual for this board, I think it's also unusual that I get the sense that this very well could be a contested election among members of this board. It's, that's typically not the experience that I've seen on this board, and so I think those two things sort of play into each other. A contested election, and then the ability to cast a ballot in secret so that at the end of the process, we can all just move forward, and this can be done, and there's no hurt feelings, and the outcome's the outcome, I think is, provides a measure of protection for the board to move forward as, as a unified body.
So I'll just give my two cents, since I am also a member of this board. I, I have to agree with Jackie in that if it is unusual that it's contested, that's an okay thing. I think that's pretty good, actually, which means that this board is likely to be presented with more than one option, which is, is always a terrific thing. But I also respect the fact that this group needs to work together. I am not at all convinced that taking this vote by secret ballot is not stepping up, as we've heard. I think it's quite the opposite, because we will be able to continue to step up without, without fear of the above. So I needed to share that.
Any other discussion?
Yep. Well, I think I started watching the meetings about 1973, never had support, felt that they needed to vote by secret ballot, and I, and I still don't understand why we can't stand behind who we want to vote for, for chair or vice chair. I think doing it by secret ballot makes it even worse.
So if I were to call the question now, would we have a revote on the secret ballot?
You did call it, so we are going to have a revote, once I'm sure that everyone has had their opportunity to be heard. Okay? So has everyone on the board had their opportunity, if they chose? All right. So let's go back, and we had a motion from Jackie. Does that, do you want to restate the motion, please, for the record?
I move that elections for chair and for vice chair be conducted by secret written ballot.
Thank you. And do we have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
We have a second. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three, four. All those opposed, one, two, three. The ayes have it. Thank you. We will move on.
Now you need to take nominations.
So we are now going to take nominees for chair, and I think that I would like to give everyone an opportunity to speak their mind on this. So first nominee for chair, please. We have Jim Sullivan speaking up.
I'd like to nominate Ed Woods for chair.
Thank you. Second nomination from Clark, please.
I would like to nominate Tom Haley for the position of chair, please.
Thank you. And Nancy has a nomination?
I'll nominate Clark Adams for chair.
Thank you. Any other nominees for chair? Hearing none, we'll take it to a secret ballot. I need, I, I.
It won't be secret for three of us.
Thank you. I wish we had some music to be playing, you know, that game show hold music. That's it, Shirley. Can you do it louder? We should have given Shirley the microphone while Stu was counting.
Tom Haley is elected chair.
Say it again.
Tom Haley is elected chair.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Haley.
Let's, let's get everything settled.
I have a question.
If you wish to have the votes.
Do we get the total votes?
Sure. Tom Haley for, Ed Woods two, Clark Adams one.
Thank you.
If I read these all correctly.
All right. We will now move on to nominations for vice chair. Do I hear nominations for vice chair?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jim Sullivan.
We have one nomination for Jim Sullivan. Do I hear any other nominations?
I nominate, whoops, I nominate Clark Adams.
Nominations for Jim Sullivan and Clark Adams. Do I hear any others? Thank you.
I thought Jack was going to do that for us, Sarah. That's a Jeopardy tune, I guess. That's appropriate, maybe. Jim Sullivan is elected vice chair by a vote of 5 to 2.
Congratulations, Mr. Sullivan. I will now trade seats with you.
When the music stops, you have to be seated in the new chair.
In my jacket.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of March 24th, the warrants, and liquor licenses. For the purpose of discussion, could I hear a motion to accept? For the purpose of discussion, I'll make a motion to accept.
Question?
We have a motion that we want to get cleared first. Not that I'm presiding officer, but.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Now we can discuss, Tom.
On the liquor license, under the second class, it says Four Corners Community Market. Is this the legal name of the Bennington Community Market, or is there a business going in or operating at the Putnam Block under this name?
I believe the Four Corners Community Market is the community market.
So there isn't a business at the Putnam Block using that name?
Not that I know of.
Okay, but I didn't know either, that's why.
These come to me from the clerk, so I, I know what you know.
Okay.
All right. For, in the interest of transparency, I have a conflict in the license applications, so I have need to recuse. And also for transparency, Tom, we should note that we received a note from a member of the public with questions or clarity on the minutes. Yep. If you want to raise that issue, Jim.
First, first meeting, first item, okay.
Are you familiar with the issue?
I, as far as the minutes go?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe we, I received, I think all the select board members received some notes on the minutes from the last meeting regarding, I think, one of the public comments, and I can't remember if we called the details. Does somebody have them, or?
I see the member here from the public, if we needed input, by the way.
I was not copied on that email, so I, I know.
Thanks, anyway.
I'll do my best.
I don't have an email that we received. It's in your inbox.
Sarah, are you looking?
I am searching, but the, the community member is here, and I'm not able to locate it at the moment.
Jack, I think that you submitted the email. Could you summarize the, the comments on the minutes for us?
Sorry about that.
I do have the email.
You've had a great time.
I'll read it in full.
Yeah, if, if that's the best way to do it. I mean, I think what we're looking for is, is language to potentially correct the, the text of the minutes.
If I recall from first reading this email, there wasn't proposed replacement language, just a correction of what was indeed communicated. The email says, "First correction, lines 102 to 105. In the section of the minutes describing Tyler Colton's public comment, the minutes currently read, 'We, we also have launched a capital campaign for the center on Sunday, March 30th, to mark the end of Ramadan at Lake Perrin from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., where there will be food, music, and dancing.'" Jack says, "This makes it sound like, one, we launched the campaign on March 30th, and two, the campaign was launched to mark the end of Ramadan. This is inaccurate and also does not represent the fullness of what was said at the meeting. Tyler mentioned a second event at the college in his comment that is not represented in the minutes. This event was an if-tor event, apologies if I pronounced that incorrectly. The minutes currently state, 'On behalf of the Bennington." The minutes currently state, 'On behalf of the Bennington County Multicultural Center, thanked all that came to the concert and event at Bennington College.' This does not make it clear that there was a concert and a separate event. Tyler also mentioned that we launched our newsletter and had a tag sale, these are not represented in the minutes. Tyler's mention of the March 30th event was to invite people to attend. The event was for Eid, 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 and to mark the end of Ramadan, as he stated." There's a second correction, but maybe we can take them one at a time?
I'm gonna need a copy of that.
Sure, I think that the challenge with that, as thorough as it was, is summarizing it in the context of how the minutes should be rewritten. So, yeah, I'm kind of struggling to find a way to...
If I make a suggestion?
...emphasize that, and open to suggestions.
I have one, and that is that we note in the minutes that there is an update attached, and we simply attach Jack's comments as an addendum to the minutes.
I just, in real time, forwarded that over to our Nancy Lively as well, because I just located that.
I like that as a way of clarification, thank you, Ed. Any other thoughts on that from board members?
Our town manager did mention at one point that the minutes is just to capture our meeting, it's not to capture everything that was said, so maybe when this is looked over, just to capture briefly what was said in the minutes, in our meeting, excuse me, instead of word for word. But if the community member does want everything captured, we can just take that out and add an addendum, if that is okay, Vice Chair.
Yeah, I think, good point, and the minutes are just intended to be a record of the meeting, and I think that that's what Jack's comments were, just to try to factually correct that without rewriting it. Next time rewrite them for us.
My intention was mainly about the conflation of things that were separate, and then I had hoped to provide the fullness, and also knowing that there's the full record available on Cat TV, I didn't know what the procedure was within the board to possibly present alternate language, but in the future, we will provide full written versions of public comment directed at Nancy.
Thank you. Jackie, could you, there was a second?
Yes.
Could you just cover that quickly?
Second correction, lines 95 to 98. Orley Hershey was present as a member of the local indivisible chapter and works on the immigrants' issues subgroup. The minutes currently state the im-defense local immigrants subgroup. I think it's just a misspelling of indivisible.
Thank you. My sense is that those comments attached, as Ed suggested, would serve the purpose of clarifying what actually occurred and was said at the meeting. Does anyone think that we should attempt to rewrite the minutes, or should we take a motion to amend the minutes by attaching those comments?
Is that a motion?
That's a request for a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion that we do what he just said.
A second.
I'll say it, I'll say it, I'm being reminded by my co-board members that I have to state the motion. The motion is to amend the minutes from March 24th by referencing in the area of the minutes in question that there is an attachment from a member of the public that provides more clarity.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
So, any discussion on the motion?
Thank you, and thank you for that clarification. In the future, if you want to add an addendum, please just send it along, happy to do that. Thanks for that, though.
Thank you. All in favor of amending the minutes as noted? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the minutes are amended.
I abstained, I was not a board member at the time of that meeting.
Good, I'll abstain too.
Do we still have it?
It passes four, four to zero, I believe, okay.
Was that a motion for the, so we're still on the consent agenda?
Yeah, oh, right, so all we've done is amended the minutes at this point, and, yeah, do we, we've essentially taken care of the minutes, looking for any comments on the warrants?
Right. Another question on the minutes?
Yeah, yes.
Page 12, number 385, the section is Brief Select Board Announcements, and yet, when I look at the agenda tonight, we are back to other business, as it was other business on the agenda for decades.
Thank you, Nancy, I think we can take up the agenda item when we get to it, but as far as the minutes go, Brief Select Board Announcements was...
Okay, I'm just trying to get clarification here.
What happened at the meeting, so, okay. Good, okay, is that all in the minutes then?
Can I make a motion that we accept the warrants and licenses?
You certainly can, is there a second to accepting the warrants and licenses?
Yeah, for the purpose of discussion, I would like to second that, could I add some questions on the warrants, please?
Absolutely, so, we have a motion and a second to accept the warrants and licenses, and discussion?
Yep. Hi, as, again, keeping with my standard of behavior, I'm looking here on page two, a line, item number 402986, it looks to, you know, BRCRC, and I can't decipher the alphabet, if someone could enlighten me what the heck that means.
It's in my wheelhouse.
I can explain that, the Bennington County Regional Commission acts as the manager of the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance, which is a 13-town alliance that manages the transfer stations and hazardous waste collection facilities of the county itself. And so we, as a contractor, we pay them quarterly for their efforts on our behalf, which includes not only the operations of the household hazardous waste collection facility, but also overseeing the entire alliance, the way we do business, conducting meetings and everything else.
Okay, so that's a multifaceted payment, then?
It is, and it's carried separately in the budget as a line item.
Okay, as I think I've said before, one of the things that always confounds me is acronyms and abbreviations, and I know there's some business standards of way of doing things, but I don't have that kind of training in mind, so thank you. Couple of other warrant questions, if I may, please. Page nine, again, item 403042, to the MNT and Wilmington Trust, a WWTF upgrade?
That's a wastewater treatment facility upgrade.
Okay.
And those are payments of principal and interest on current borrowings that are outstanding.
Okay, all right, and my final one, again, is page 10, number 403065, looks like the, something with skate park cameras for the skate park, is this purchase part of the monies that we set aside for the skate park, or is this an external expenditure?
No, these are portions of the monies that were set aside for the skate park, and it's part of the project. Safety Systems of Vermont does a lot of work in this, in the area of camera security and safety.
Okay, I was just wondering if, as we expend funds and progresses, that's what we're gonna see, we're gonna see these expenditures?
Yeah, these are all coming out of the reserve for that particular project.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, are there any other questions or comments on the warrants or the licenses? We have a motion on the floor with a second to approve the warrants and licenses, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, and my next act as standing Chair is to turn the Chair back to the elected Chair.
I will remind everyone that the purpose of public comment is to provide information that is for the good of the community, it's not a time for questions and answers and backs and forths and so forth. If you do have a brief question that we're able to answer, I'll ask you to take your seat, and we will attempt to do so at the end. Also, please do attempt to keep your times to three minutes, we have not yet appointed a timekeeper. But I think we could probably work together on that today and do our best. So first, Jason, Bennington artist, Jason Fredrickson, Bennington Artisan Market update.
Congratulations. Good evening, Jason Fredrickson, Bennington, Vermont. Good evening, select board members, town leaders, and our amazing community. Thank you for being part of this incredible journey and bold adventure as it reaches a major turning point. Tonight is a milestone. After weeks of planning, listening, refining, and hoping, we're finally here. The Bennington Artisan Market is no longer just a vision, it's real, it's forming, and it's happening right here in Bennington. As of this week, the Bennington Artisan Market is officially forming as a Vermont LLC. This allows us to move forward quickly and responsibly while still holding the long-term goal of transitioning into a nonprofit once the timing and infrastructure align. We made this decision because time is critical. Jay and Joan Wittenberg, the heart of Jay's, have officially retired. The business is for sale, and Joan is now home in hospice care. The opportunity to honor their contribution and help keep downtown vibrant is slipping away. We're in the final stages of securing a lease for approximately 2,700 square feet, occupying one side of the current space, and we're finalizing negotiations for the purchase of the business assets. That includes the frame shop, art supplies, select gifts, souvenirs, and the bones of a store that served this town for more than five decades. With the community's support, we'll soon launch a grassroots, community-powered GoFundMe campaign to raise $250,000, helping cover the cost of purchasing the business and supporting our first year of operations. It's the next big step in bringing BAM to life, and it will be officially announced on Facebook as soon as our business documents are finalized. This is our moment to show just how powerful local impact can be. But this is more than a transaction, it's a vision. Bennington Artisan Market will be a real artisan market, a Vermont store that reflects the creativity, spirit, and character of our region. It will feature a retail space showcasing handcrafted works from local and regional artists, a custom in-house framing center, a full-service art supply department, Vermont souvenirs, and a selection of greeting cards, all continuing Jay's legacy of supporting artists, students, hobbyists, and offering a meaningful shopping experience for locals and visitors alike. And now, we get to build it together. This is where we all step in. Whether it's $10, $100, or simply sharing the campaign with your friends and neighbors, every single act of support moves us closer. This isn't just about buying a business, it's about honoring what's been built, reimagining our downtown, and proving that when Bennington shows up, big things happen. This is how we support the legacy of Jay and Joan, this is how we keep Bennington creative, connected, and thriving. Thank you for believing in this vision, thank you for standing with a family in transition, and thank you for helping us build something truly special for Bennington. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Will, I apologize, I should have let you go first, if you want to get on the road, probably. So, Will Greer with a legislative update?
No, that's fine, here, I'll pull it up. Okay, good evening, everyone, congratulations to the returning and newly-elected select board members. My report tonight's gonna primarily pertain to education and the things around it that were in a recent bill, H454, that was passed last week. So the House passed this bill after lengthy debate around small and independent schools, district consolidation, and class size minimums. Some major highlights the bill include, and I particularly want to go after this one because I think it was probably the best development out of the negotiations, is changing property tax classifications. Right now, Vermont has the homestead rate and the non-homestead rate. The non-homestead rate is all the property that's not your primary residence, and so what this bill does is it begins to, the process of breaking down the non-homestead rate into three categories. The first is the non-homestead, non-residential rate, things like factories, businesses, and the like. The second is non-homestead apartment, those are rental spaces, and then the third one is non-homestead residential, which is second homes and seasonal properties. Now, one question I had, and I haven't gotten a solid answer, so forgive me if it's wrong, I'll correct myself when I get this, but it's my understanding that short-term rentals are under the non-homestead residential category, and I know there's been some controversy around breaking down the classifications, but I just want to say, I think it's going to allow us to adjust the rates appropriately moving forward to make sure that we're taking into account economic changes, and also encouraging growth in certain areas for development. But also, the main reason is to stabilize the homestead rate. And I know there's been a lot of concerns around class size minimums and other points such as district lines, governance models, and more. In this stage, though, H454 only suggests what the legislature may consider to reduce cost. This is gonna be further analyzed over the summer and fall, and the legislature will be presented with different options about how to make it work come January. And I want to note that there were provisions added to protect small schools that several of us pushed for, but there's certainly going to be a lot more discussion around that topic. Other action items, because we didn't just do education, include passing the opioid abatement fund, which is gonna provide Vermont with $25 million from court settlements this year alone to support these, to support those affected by our opioid crisis. There's also a bill around extending after-hour access to orders against sexual assault, that was a big change, I thought. And I just want to close briefly, I think I'm under three minutes, but just want to close by thanking everyone that's reached out about all sorts of bills, both the nice and the not-so-nice responses, but everything going on in my field here, so thank you, I appreciate it, and just please continue to reach out, so I'll leave it there, but thank you, guys.
Deb Matt, the Bennington Senior Center.
Deb Matt, Bennington, I don't know if I should have totally labeled it the Senior Center, because this involves the Green Mountain Express. I can't tell you when the Green Mountain Express was given a copy of our itinerary for the Senior Center, which involves us renting one of their buses for our trips. And we were supposed to have a bus trip, shopping trip to Rutland tomorrow, and Wendy called them about two weeks ago to secure the bus for the trip tomorrow, and because there was such an interest in it, she was looking for the bigger bus. And when I got to the center today, I was told that Green Mountain Express does not have a driver and a bus for us. And Jeremy said he doesn't recollect having the conversation about the bus. This is not the first time that we have lost a trip because there was no driver or no bus. And sadly, I did not keep track of the trips and the buses. So this has been an ongoing problem for us, because it takes a lot of effort to line up some of these trips, and then at the last minute, we've even had it where Wendy called the day before, and it's like, yep, you got the bus, and then come in the next morning, and, oh, there's no bus, there's no driver. So it's a problem for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak that did not put their name down on the sign-up Jack Rossermanly, take the podium.
Hello there, Jack Rossermanly, Bennington, Vermont. I am here to talk about the work of the Bennington County Multicultural Community Center. Before I get into that, I do just want to quickly touch on something that I think a lot of people probably saw in the broader news, which is that the temporary protected st... status for many people from Afghanistan who are here on a parole status, which is how a lot of people arrived during the emergency evacuations, was taken away. And so about 14,000 people, about 14,600 people from Afghanistan who fled the Taliban as part of those emergency evacuations are going to be asked to self-deport in the next few weeks. That is horrifying news in its own right. I am, happy is too generous a word, to say that I can at least let you know that that does not apply to any of the people who came through our program here in Bennington, who are all here on refugee status, or if they came with another status, have since transitioned through applying for asylum and then going through that process. So while it doesn't mean that anyone from our local Afghan community is going to be asked to leave, it does mean that they know dozens and dozens of people around the country, and it's an incredibly difficult time for that community. And it is also a time when it feels like every new piece of news adds fear and uncertainty to the lives of people who are working really hard to contribute to this community, to build their lives here, and to eventually become permanent residents and citizens of the United States if they haven't already. So while that news is not the sort of direct horror for the people who are here, it does add to an environment of a great deal of uncertainty and fear. Aside from that, the work of the Bennington County Multicultural Community Center in the face of incredible funding challenges, we had about 82% of our funding cut because of the federal rollback of the refugee resettlement programs, our work continues at a very significant pace. Both the direct work that we do with the 105 people who arrived through our program who are here in Bennington County, which represents about 31 different households, we also support other organizations doing similar work in the area, and we have undertaken several significant community programs that respond not only to the needs we know of from the refugee community, but the needs that we see in the broader Bennington community. So we have a gardening and farming program, which responds not only to the fact that there are people in the refugee community with experience in those fields, who are interested in building that experience here, but it is also a chance for us to contribute to local food security. Last year, we had two pilot gardens, and this year, we're expanding to having about five acres of land under either direct or cooperative management, two to three acres of which will be productive food land. And that also includes a partnership with the SBSU School District and Molly Stark Elementary to transform the grounds there into a hands-on science education space. So that's work that we hope to complete in the next couple of years. We also have a public art program that's transformed the outside of our building, and will transform the outside of the tutorial center. And we also have a language learning center that we're working on creating in our space that we have met with all of the local public libraries, as well as language learning faculty at Bennington College. So it's not only the direct work that we do, it's also the way we hope to have a broad and positive impact in this community. And to accomplish that work, we have launched our fundraising campaign, the Deep Roots Clear Skies campaign, through which we are hoping to raise $750,000 locally and beyond. It's a big number that sounds pretty scary, but there's 40,000 people who live in Bennington County, and we only need 750 of them to write us $1,000 checks. That feels pretty achievable, and it doesn't just have to be Bennington County. So if you're interested in figuring out how you can be a part of this work, either through volunteering or through contributing to our fundraising, reach out to us at benningtoncountymcc@gmail.com. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Jack, do you folks have a Venmo or PayPal account or anything like that where folks could contact you?
Yes, we use the service GiveButter, which is used by a lot of nonprofits, and we are a nonprofit, I should mention that, your donations will be tax-deductible. But we do have a GiveButter, and if you go to our website, you will find the links to give online. And similar, if you send us an email, we can always send you the link to give online or provide other direction on how to give a donation.
Thank you very much. Moving on, next on the agenda, we have the Local Emergency Management Plan. I am Chief Doucette.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I brought this yellow binder because we put out an APB on the sun, because it's been missing quite a long time, and finally, we saw it today, although just for a short time. But I thought that this binder would be full of sunshine for all of us this evening, although a bit cloudy. So tonight, I'm here to just talk to you briefly, I promise, this will be one of my shorter presentations. As you all know, we were here a couple weeks ago with our friends that have worked with us on the heat annex. Once this is approved, hopefully this evening, we'll begin working on our cold-weather annex, which can then be attached to the Local Emergency Management Plan. Again, this is a living and breathing document. So tonight, I just want to touch on a couple of things with all of you. Select Board members received this document in their packets, and the Local Emergency Management Plan was updated on April 9th of 2025, and I did provide that to the town manager so that you could all see that. With that being said, a couple of key areas in the Emergency Management Plan, the Local Emergency Management Plan that we have to be aware of, is first and foremost, the Emergency Operations Center, and who staffs that, that's the first block, as required by the state. Different resources that we have, public information and warnings, which are listed here, vulnerable populations and locations, and we did a little extra work on that this year. There's been some changes, some businesses have been bought by other companies, and we made sure we changed all that. There's been some changes in our local schools that we use for sheltering, some management changes and things of that nature, and we may see more of that as the summer comes to us and before school starts in the fall. So again, living and breathing document, we'll have to update that. And then certainly, contact information. I know that when we, Martha and others were here, when we presented the heat annex, there were some questions, I believe from you, Clark, about WBTN. For some reason, WBTN was non-responsive to us, and there were phone calls and a lengthy email sent prior to me turning this plan over to the manager, and so if you can help me with that in any way, I would appreciate it, but again, non-responsive from WBTN. The Bennington banner wanted a name change, and we did all of that, because we know that our partners, as far as getting information out, are essential to us providing safety and the information that they need. So I said it the last time I was here, and it got quite a bit of feedback on different social media outlets, but yes, the town does have a Local Emergency Management Plan, I just want to use and say this one more time, it's imperative that the community and all of you, and even all of you, are prepared at home as well. Because, quite honestly, if we have a disaster or catastrophe or really bad weather, like we've had in the past, usually it's weather-related, it may be a couple of days before we can get you service and access to other things. So being prepared is very important at home, and making sure that we're not 100% reliant upon the town of Bennington to get those services to you, because we might be busy, you know, fixing the flood wall, or, you know, pumping out basements, or all the things that we've done in the past, so. But I realize that's brief, and I would entertain any questions from the Select Board or the community in reference to this plan, and we'll go from there. I will say that the plan was not 100% complete until we had our voting situation here tonight, and because it did require that I list the chair and the vice chair and a Select Board member, and just because it was not complete, and anybody that might have looked at this packet, what we have done is we've listed Mr. Haley, Mr. Sullivan, and Mr. Woods. I'm required to list three Select Board members, and those are the three members that I have listed in the plan, and I will, I'm going right back to the office, I'm going to type that, so essentially, this plan is done and ready to be adopted, but I will answer your questions. Mr. Haley?
All right, we'll start with questions from the board. Nancy?
Sure, I just need to get a couple of things clarified.
Sure.
I believe we were told about a year ago, in a disaster, hurricane, tornado, earthquake, our town is required by law to provide the emergency disaster shelter for everyone who lives in Bennington County? Is that correct?
We would be required to open the shelter at Mount Anthony Union Middle School in the event of a huge disaster, yes.
But are we required to do it for everyone who lives in Bennington County? They can come here?
That is correct.
And all of the other counties in the state do that?
I'm not sure what other counties do, quite honestly. We have, for us, we have the Red Cross trailer that's already pre-positioned at Mount Anthony Union Middle School. For anyone that has kids that get dropped off at the school, you'll see our big red and white trailer up there already pre-positioned. That's how we do things here in Bennington County. Now, that disaster trailer, now let's say, for example, years ago, think about this, we're all a little bit older in this room, you think about years ago when they had the disaster over in the Wilmington area, when they got all the ice, and we were very fortunate, and we did not, our disaster trailer landed elsewhere, because it was needed elsewhere. And the Bennington Fire Department, if I ask them to, the fire chief, they will go up with their hazmat truck, they'll grab that trailer, and they'll bring it where it needs to be. So we help out not just in our own county, but we can move that trailer elsewhere, because that's just what we do. I'm not quite sure what other counties do, but...
But is it a state or federal law that every county in Vermont has some type of a disaster plan?
Yes, the state of Vermont requires, after this is, well, if it is adopted this evening, first thing tomorrow, I'll be sending this to the state.
So the largest town or city in each county is designated to be that emergency disaster center?
Nancy, I can't say the largest, I just don't know the answer to that.
But what I mean is, everyone who lives in a county in Vermont needs to know where they need to go in their own county, correct?
Yes, for example, the, like, the town of Shasbury, if they needed a large shelter, the town of Shasbury would list Mount Anthony Union Middle School as a location that they could go to. That's part of it, and that's, you know, that's an agreement also that we have with the SBSU, is that we have that shelter at the middle school, but other counties, I'm sorry, other communities within the county can send people to our shelter, yes.
Okay. And when it comes to the heating and cooling shelters, and I'm looking specifically at overnight ones, are we required by law to provide shelters for people in the town of Bennington, Bennington County, or is there no law requiring that?
There's not a law that requires that we have overnight shelters. The town's not responsible for that. We're required to work with our community partners and determine who might be able to take people, and more times than not, it's generally, as we've discussed with the heat annex, it's generally a few hours a day, we can set the times. We don't have an overnight shelter for heat at this time.
Okay. That was going to be my question, if it gets to the point to overnight shelters, would you be coming back to the board if it's going to be in a town building or a town space?
I wouldn't come back to the board, I would be allowed to make that, if it's an emergency, I would be allowed to communicate with Dan Monks and Stu Hurd, and we would make the decision on what we were going to do with that in the event of an actual emergency, to use, but right now, in this, in this plan, we don't have any, per se, town facilities listed. The Bennington Rural Fire Department does have, does provide us with an alternate local shelter if we needed that, but there's nothing here that says that it's overnight. It's warming and cooling and food preparation, as most of these are. It's the regional shelter that would have warm, cool, overnight, food prep, showers, and healthcare. So, you know, and not to muddy this up, I just want you all to understand, you know, that the hospital is back on track with the health department, and we're, you know, the Mount Anthony Union High School, I'm sorry, the Mount Anthony Union Middle School is an alternate location for a hospital location if needed, with helicopter landing zones, and those are all things that we worked on years ago, and we now want to revisit that because we haven't visited it in quite some time. So just 100% transparency, letting you know what's going on in the emergency management world, but we're hoping that in June-ish, we'll be working with the hospital and the Vermont Department of Health to make sure that we have an alternate hospital site, you know, temporary hospital location.
Because so much of the work is being done in Bennington, and pretty much all the facilities will be here in Bennington, I have a real concern with the line added that people can cross state lines. I think we'll have enough people in Bennington County who may need to come here. I would hate to have somebody get here from out of state before somebody in Bennington County were responsible for, only to say, well, sorry, there's no cars, we don't have enough supplies, people came across the state and got here before you do. So I really don't understand why we're saying people from outside of the state can come.
Well, I think people will go to where services are, Nancy, and I mean, you know, I think, too, we have to look at, you know, where we're located and what we have here that can help people, such as Southwest Vermont Medical Center. I mean, law enforcement goes up to Southwest Vermont Medical Center on occasion to deal with people that are brought in from New York and Massachusetts, because New York and mass law enforcement have no authority in Vermont. So, I mean, we already have things that are going on in Bennington where we're having to provide services to folks that actually don't reside in Bennington or in Vermont, and honestly, I just think that's the way of the world. I mean, I don't want to turn, honestly, I don't want to turn anybody away from Husick Falls that might need our help, maybe they can't get to Troy or Albany or wherever, and there are times where we have to take people from Bennington, if we had a crisis, we might have to take people from Bennington County and ship them up to Rutland County via bus. So I think we all have to work together to make this successful if we have a real emergency.
But we're talking the disaster.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess my concern is, and I brought this up over the past year, I don't hear anything about the other towns in the county. I'm not aware of the other towns in the county stepping up to do much. Has anybody on this committee over the past year talked to any of the other towns to say, we're working on this in Bennington, you might want to set something up locally?
Yeah, but that's not true. I don't want to single Paul out, but, you know, Paul is, you know, is a town of Bennington employee, but he is the EMD in Shasbury. Every three months, we have quarterly meetings, and we discuss things that potentially could happen in Bennington County. In fact, the next meeting is actually going to be in Pownell, so Paul and I will have to go to Pownell for a meeting down there, because other communities, you know, are involved. We've been to meetings in Arlington, we've been to meetings in Manchester, you know, so other folks are involved with planning for emergencies in their own communities. The middle school is a regional shelter, and there's also regional training exercises and planning exercises that go on. So again, we're all kind of working together. Another great example, I mean, in this plan, if the town of Shasbury needs some equipment from Bennington or Arlington, we're obviously going to help one another out. I mean, we saw that during Irene, right? When we almost lost the flood wall, and RJ Jolly was out there, and I was there, too, and the ground was rumbling, and we had all sorts of equipment there. I mean, we just all kind of have to work together, and they might have equipment that we don't have. And so it's important that we all work together, that we all participate in the training exercises, and that we are open and welcoming, because if we were to lose that middle school, we might have to send people up to Arlington High School or Fisher Elementary School up in Arlington. So there's a lot of options, and I think that's why we have these meetings, so we can do the what-ifs, and we can plan, and we can exercise, and we just did the big snow exercise, and, you know, it's, this is a lot of work. I want you all to understand that. It's a lot of work to do this. This isn't just simply create a plan, and Stu Hurd keeps one in his office, I keep one in my office, and Tom Haley, the new chair, has this and says, now, Stuart, why are we spending $10,000? You know, I mean, I think that people need to understand that we want to be prepared in the last however many years that I've been doing this... and the last however many years that I've been doing this hasn't been perfect. You know, we learn from our mistakes. We had the Teamsters here, we had Walmart here with tractor-trailer trucks dropping off water, we were distributing water, and yes, we brought water to Woodford, right? We had people come from Wilmington and pick up water because we have to share the supplies that we have. I mean, these were tractor-trailer trucks loaded and, you know, yeah, I just think that we, again, we're working together, we need to share our resources and I'm sure that, you know, if there was a huge disaster and there was a federal declaration, then what would happen is Stuart and Dan and others, we would all work together and we would do our best to recoup our money. That's why we need to have these plans.
Go ahead, I got, is there something else I can ask?
Jim, you've been waving at me for a while.
Oh, it's a comment in the question, that was kind of, you know, one of the issues that I'm familiar with from a past life. So, my comment is, yeah, just to be clear, all of the towns, all the municipalities in the state of Vermont are required to have these local emergency management plans, LEMPs, as they're now, kind of a carrot and stick requirement, but pretty much all do in our region. And, you know, of necessity, some of the smaller municipalities reference resources that are available in the larger municipalities because they just don't exist in the smaller towns. At the same time, a lot of those towns, Arlington, Manchester, Dorset, they do have Pownell, they do have a lot of resources and those are things that are potentially available for, you know, crosstown support as well. And I think that really goes for municipalities around the country as well, having local emergency management plans. And the regional coordination, while strongest within a county because of the way we're set up, certainly crosses state borders as well, just to make sure that resources are deployed as efficiently as possible to serve people and make sure people are safe as effectively as possible. And my question is just one on process, is I seem to remember that there was often a bit of a serious lag time between submitting a local emergency management plan to Vermont Emergency Management and getting it approved because a lot of their back and forth. Are we at a stage in that process already or once this is adopted, we submit it and they're going to start reviewing it at that point?
Yes, so once this is adopted, I will send this up tomorrow and they will place this on file. Again, as you know, living and breathing, we can add to it, we can change it, we can delete, and we just send up the new plan. You know, it doesn't have to be adopted every time, it has to be adopted yearly. And so, this is, I mean, this is the basics and as we add annexes, we add them and we submit them and that's, as you know, that's how we're doing this.
Thank you.
Clerk?
Hi, Chief.
Hi.
So, you're in uniform, so you're chief today or director?
Well, it does say in here that I'm the police chief, at least for now, and maybe not after tonight, but we'll see.
You know, we talked about resources. I was kind of looking over here and the one thing I see, and it's in my backyard, that's not here, is the airport. And I think of, you know, our Irene things and flooding and roads and all that kind of stuff. And, you know, if we looked at maybe adding some sort of functionality or contingency to use the airport as part of a disaster event.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take a look at this. I mean, the airport's not a vulnerable population.
No, I was looking at the resources, that's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
You know, page three, you looked at the municipal resources mutually and all that kind of stuff. And I was just thinking in terms of, as we all know how much fun Route 9 or 7 can be in terrible weather, let alone through a disaster, on top of getting people in and out of here or critical items in and out of town, as long as we could maybe add the airport as a potential resource in this document.
Yeah, I can certainly add the airport under other local resource. I have all their contact information in my computer, so that's no problem.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah. We will be voting on these plans every year, right? So, if there's additions or deletions, we can do that next year?
Yes. So, next year, this will come back before you in April. We're a week ahead this year than we were from where we were last year, but yeah, this will come back before you. And honestly, Nancy, we're, you know, once we get done with the cold annex, I'm going to be back here, making sure that you all understand what that one's about.
And meetings going forward that are held on this, will they be advertised on the town website so any citizen who wants to go and participate would be able to?
Now, which meetings are we talking about?
Well, at the last meeting, you said the citizens were represented by a couple of citizens. I'd like that advertised so all citizens who'd like to participate can go?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that we could, you know, advertise. I might have to find a bigger space. I mean, we're at the BRC now. That's where we have our meetings to work on the annexes, but I'm sure we could put the information out if people wanted to attend one of those meetings. You know, it's, we're very focused, it's an hour and we stop at an hour. And I think you all heard it the last time, we have a parking lot up on the wall, so if you come to my meeting and you start going in the wrong direction, you're going to the parking lot.
But I think it's important, we've had citizens ask questions about different things tied to this, you know, for several years now, so I'd like any member of the public to be able to go at least listen. Even if they aren't participating, they could listen and maybe send in questions later.
Yeah, no, I agree. And then, you know, the other thing to think about is, you know, this, these, everybody, well, maybe not everybody, but a majority of people know that are interested in these plans, that they are due to the state in May. That's why we try to finish it in April. And, you know, it was on the agenda tonight and I'm hopeful that we have some questions from the audience. But yes, we can certainly do that. I'll work with Jonah to make sure that we have that. The cold annex is, we've already got, you know, the basics down on that one from our heat annex, but, you know, like Jack and Martha, we're at those meetings along with others, Wendy, that you met the last time I was here, if you didn't know Wendy already. And, but we can certainly open that up and if we get too many people, we'll just have to use the firehouse.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the public? Yes? No, I need you to come to the mic, please, so Cat TV can pick you up. Not this one, please.
So, I mean, I have thought about disasters because of Irene, Kathy Chianowski, but that's a very comprehensive document. But how would I know that I'm supposed to go to the middle school if there's a disaster? How are you going to distribute this information to the public?
Yeah, so, in the plan here, we have different means of distributing information and that's what we would follow. You know, information would be posted on social media, we would put it out to, you know, we have Vermont Alert that we could utilize, Town Facebook, Police Department Facebook, our two different websites. We're using the Bennington banner and the Vermont News and Media, Cat TV, we'd be using the Albany news stations. And we do have the ability to place public notices at the town offices, the police department, the Bennington Free Library, Walmart, just to name a few, so I don't ramble on and on. But there's several different ways that you would know and, you know, and if you really needed assistance and you called the police department, the communication staff would tell you that that shelter is open and that you can go there. So, I mean, we've exercised that and we've opened it and, you know, when we have had disasters, I will tell you that in all the classes that I've taken to do work on this, very few people actually show up at shelters. A lot of people will go and stay with family or they'll stay in a hotel and things like that. And I will tell you that, you know, when we've had incidents, the Abbey Group comes out and people are always worried about the flu and things like that. The Abbey Group does a great job and, you know, we also have other requirements that we have to meet. So, there's just a lot of different ways that the information will come out and if you haven't signed up for Vermont Alert, I suggest that you do that. We talked about that a couple of weeks ago with the heat annex. So, great question.
Anyone else? Martha?
And Tom, I have a follow-up to that when it's possible.
So, I have a few questions for you. Some of them I know the answers to, but I think it's helpful to get information out to the public. My first question is, I believe Dan Monks is listed as the second-in-command to you on this?
On this plan, correct.
Yeah. So, I was just wondering if you've done any training with him or if you will be doing any training with him to make sure that in the case that you're not around or incapacitated, hopefully not, that he would have that full training and to know exactly what to do. Your head is full of a lot of knowledge and he needs that knowledge, so I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I mean, Dan's been around a long time and he is well-versed on this plan and Dan's been working, we've been working together on the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is another plan, and Dan's been actively participating in that alongside of Paul Dansrow and RJ Jolly and Larry Gates, and we're almost done with that. And all the plans kind of come together and we need all those other plans. So, you know, I'm confident that, you know, Dan would be able to, you know, to fill that role and he would be working alongside of, again, Cam Grandy and Jonah and Michelle Johnson. And, you know, we have a really good, really good staff with the town of Bennington and we talk about this at staff meetings and I think that, I think it would be great. And you know what? The town gives me a phone, right? Dan can always call me.
I'm also wondering, so if this gets approved tonight, the heat annex will be added to the lump officially. And we've added a lot more criteria for activation of the lump for specific temperatures and conditions, and we've added a lot of different means of communication, as you were just talking about. So, I just am wondering if you can let the public know, will we start to see those as the hot weather starts to come in, if we see spikes in temperature, early spikes in temperature? When will we start to see, will this come immediately start to roll out? Will we start to hear these notifications on the website, on Facebook, et cetera, from Jonah?
Yeah, I mean, Jonah's really good at what he does and I think that, you know, Jonah and I work well together. When we have those notifications that need to go out, we do text one another back and forth. We don't like to talk to each other, but we do text one another back and forth and I'm kind of excited to see what's going to happen. I hope that we hit some 90-degree days here in Bennington and we can enjoy the weather based on this lousy weather that we've been having. I'm actually looking forward to it.
And when do you expect work on the cold weather annex to start?
So, my goal is to get through this. The town manager owes me a couple of weeks of vacation. I want to be able to utilize that. And all kidding aside, I'm hoping that maybe June will kick off cold weather and we'll have that in place. You know, it should only take us a short period of time based on our weather that we've already done and I'd really like to have that up and running before the leaves come off the trees. I mean, I don't even think it's going to take that long. It should only take us a few meetings to accomplish. A lot of our contacts are going to be the same. A lot of the ways that we're going to put out the information is going to be the same and that's, you know, that's how we're going to do that, so.
And will we continue to identify community partners to set up shelters and, yeah?
So, as you all know, if you heard the presentation the last time I was here, the Red Cross did a shelter training here. I know that the class was full. I'm not, I was not able to attend that and we got an email saying the class was full. So, they must have had pretty good participation. I have not spoken with anyone from the American Red Cross in the last couple of weeks since their training here, but I do plan to follow up on that and get a list of folks that were here so that, you know, we can add that, if those folks are willing after the training, we can add that to the annexes.
Great, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Ed, you have something you wanted to follow up on?
I just wanted to chase down the fact that although this is a, you know, sort of an uncomfortable topic and, you know, nobody wants to talk about emergencies, to the public comment, the question that we got earlier about awareness, I would encourage the public to become familiar with this document ahead of time, just for the basics and not wait until there's an emergency. And obviously, this document is available on the town website right now under Select Board documents, but where is it housed where the public can peruse at any time?
So, once it's approved and we make a couple of redactions so that people's cellphone, quite honestly, people's personal cellphone numbers aren't here. I maintain the book, Stu has the book, Dan has the book and/or the documents and, you know, it'll get posted, people can look at that. But before we encourage people to study the emergency management plan, and I'm not going against you, Mr. Woods, I just want to explain that really where people should be visiting is the Vermont Emergency Management website. And it will tell you what you need to do as a person in order to prepare for disasters. That's really where we want to send people because if we break out the Yellow Sunshine Book, it's a cloudy day and people need to be prepared to help themselves at home, so...
Yep, good point.
It's fine, and I don't, not discouraging people from reading this, I just think that there's other documents that people should be reading and going to their favorite big-box store or their local mini-store that they like to go to and checking off the box and keeping that big tote down in their basement or their closet or wherever it is that they keep it and, you know, making, taking the food that's expired out or getting ready to expire and eat that this summer or whatever you're going to do so it's not wasteful. But yeah, I mean, there's, Vermont Emergency Management has a lot of great stuff that people should review, read, be prepared, and be ready to move forward.
Terrific. Where everybody, wherever people should go to get information ahead of time, I would encourage them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Okay, I would hear a motion to accept the local emergency management plan with its annex with the changes that have been noted.
I make a motion to accept the local emergency management plan with the changes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the local emergency management plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, next we have, where'd my agenda go? Paul Dansrow. This is a public hearing, no, regarding an emergency health order.
This is a notice of hearing is the correct title for it. Good evening, Paul Dansrow, Town of Bennington Fire Marshal, Bill and Inspector, Deputy Health Officer. In the Select Board package you presented tonight was the notice of hearing for an emergency health order that was issued regarding 544 Gore Road. The order was prepared and issued on 4/20/25 and tonight's presentation just requests the Select Board motion to affirm the emergency health order. So, some initial background, on the 7th of January 2025, a notice of violation was issued to the owners of 544 Gore Road for violations against Article 6, the housing building, life safety ordinance, specifically Section 6.4, due to garbage, junk, debris on their property. On March 10th and as well as March 28th, our office conducted visual inspections from Gore Road and observed that the garbage and junk had not been removed from the front yard of that property and it appeared that conditions were continuing to worsen. Based on that, on 4/25, an emergency health order was prepared and a notice of this hearing was issued to the owners, the notice of hearing was issued by the Bend PD as long as they copy the health order to one of the owners at the residence. I am pleased to say, though, as of Saturday, it appears that all the garbage and trash was removed from the front yard, does not appear to be on the property at this time. But I do request if the... But I do request if the town Select Board make a motion to affirm this emergency health order, just place it into effect, total effect. So just any questions?
Okay, thank you. I'll open it to the board first. Any questions?
Hi, Paul. Can you explain the purpose of affirming the order if the trash has been removed?
Okay, so with health orders, there's two options. You can do a regular health order, where Select Board represents the local health board. So a motion will be prepared, or excuse me, a health order will be prepared, but will be brought to the board to then issue. But in an emergency health order, though, if conditions are such that immediate action needs to be taken, as health officers, we have the ability to issue that health order. But then we still request the Select Board to come to affirm it into action. So that's what the purpose is. If that helps out.
I think so.
Okay.
Hi, hi, Paul. Thanks for coming by. I was reading through this, and I came across something that I've not encountered before. Maybe someone on the board can explain to me. Bennington Housing Board of Review. Who are those people? Or where are they?
So in the event if there was an appeal, or something that would be brought to the Select Board as a member of the Housing Board of Review?
So that's us?
So this board is the Bennington Housing Board?
Correct.
You learn something new every day.
That's why I wondered who they were. I kept looking.
Who are they?
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
We won't.
Anything else from the board?
Just a good question. So if the situation hadn't been corrected already, the actions that would be taken would be to physically enter the property and remove the garbage?
So the next step after the emergency health order is affirmed, and if the the conditions had not been corrected, and the public health hazard still, and there still was a public health hazard, the next, next business day, I'd go to our town attorney's request a court injunction. And then once we had a court order, the town would, we would request that an injunction where the town would have the authority, but not necessarily the obligation, to correct any and all violations. And then any expenses incurred, request be placed against the property. So that would have been the next step if it had not been corrected.
So can I make a motion? Well, we haven't heard from the public, and it is a public hearing.
We usually have a motion on the floor before we open it for discussion. That was my point.
Okay, I'll hear it.
So I'd like to make a motion that we that we affirm the public health order as explained by Paul Dansero.
Second.
Second was with numerous seconds.
One minute.
Okay, anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this matter? Seeing none. Anything more from the board? All right, I'll hold the vote. All those in favor of affirming the emergency health order as requested, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And abstentions? All right, we are unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, PFAS borrowing, South End, Stu.
Yes, thank you. As you know, we have been attempting to address PFAS contamination throughout the community. This is a next step. We are using State Drinking Water Fund monies, essentially a 100% forgivable loan of $662,757. It consists of Step 1 and 2 out of 3, which is basically moving from a study, which is Step 1, to formal design, which is Step 2. The area that we are looking at in this particular process is considered to be the South Shire, the upper portions of Jefferson Heights. And the line will loop along Monument Avenue back to tie into the system. And these folks will be served with municipal water, and provided a connection at the expense of the basically emerging contaminant funds through the State Drinking Water Fund. So in order for us to move forward with this project, we need to have the board move to accept the loan, to waive the reading of the resolution, which is generally standard, and to therefore move forward by also signing, at least in three different places, on the loan agreement and the certification. And that will move this project forward towards completion. Step 3 is construction. But before we can move to that, we need to receive the formal design.
All right, for the purposes of discussion, do I hear a motion to approve the agreement, waive the reading of the resolution, and accept it and sign where appropriate?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy?
So this will be no cost whatsoever to the town taxpayers?
That's correct.
Why is it not called a grant? Why is it called a loan, or I'm seeing bond?
It's the way the state approaches these particular projects. We actually have two similar nature proceeding in this community. One is the lead water service line projects. And the second is the PFAS removal projects. Both are funded through federal and state dollars. However, those dollars rest in the State Drinking Water Fund. So we must, under the state's program, borrow the money. The state then reimburses us our our expense at 100%. So there is no cost to the taxpayer. But it does require that we go through this process in every particular case.
And when it's talking about the water pressure in Jefferson Heights, bringing the town into compliance, we've heard about that many years. Because you're running the line down there, they'll let you use the some of the money for that, too?
It just, quite conveniently, the resolution of the PFAS problems in South Shire will also resolve the pressure problems for those at the highest elevations in the water system in Jefferson Heights.
So we won't have to worry about putting any more money into that?
That's correct.
Okay, good.
Anyone else? Clark?
Yeah, this is, someone stopped me in again, melting ice cream in Hannaford. Five year, you know, I explained to him, oh, it's not going to cost anything. He said, then why do we have this line here about in five years, the loan payment kicks in? I don't know.
Yes, the timeline, the timeline is is for the Step 1 and 2 process to be completed. And it's a, it's a timeline that is essentially there for the town and for the state, because the state will review and approve all of the designs that we are submitting. It's a means to ensure that the money is spent in a timely fashion, and that we address the problems in a timely fashion.
Okay, that five-year repayment was what cost them? Like, well, if it's a really basic.
The repayment, the way the project works is, our engineers will bill us. We will pay that cost, and then submit on a monthly basis for reimbursement. And those funds come out of the State Drinking Water Fund, and we are reimbursed at 100% of the cost.
Okay, I hope they're listening out there. Thank you.
Excuse me, did I make a comment on this agenda?
We'll get to you. Jackie, this is.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify, it says, if the loan does not result in a constructed project by the anticipated repayment start date, so are the terms of agreement, or the terms of forgiveness, that the project be completed, or the design be completed?
At this point, it would be Step 1 and 2 design only, because we don't have a project yet until such time as the Step 3 process moves forward. And you will see another one of these documents when Step 3 is prepared to move forward.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Now we'll go to the public. Mike?
Thank you. I wish you folks would, or still would, get a presentation to let the public know about this PFOA again, how much it has or hasn't polluted the water, what waters are polluted, what aren't, give some security to the people that our drinking water, I believe, is safe. But I think you ought to go into more detail, because people ask me all the time, what is happening now with the new PFOA, whatever. And I just think that would be a good idea. Also, I'd like to give a little bit of, I couldn't get it earlier, something happened at the house, but I'm not dissatisfied with the way it turned out for the board. I just don't like the secret process of voting. And I wish you'd make sure that doesn't happen on anything else that deals with the public. It just gives a bad flavor. And I think you people are all good people. You know, you mean well, but that was not a good thing to do. But I wish you would be open and express as much sentiment and feeling, so that people are secure about their drinking water. And you could do an agenda.
Actually, Mike, we've, the state of Vermont has been down here at least twice in the last six months, and counting a third time when they appeared with Bennington College students who have been doing an analysis of the PFOA contamination here in Bennington. So there have been public meetings held.
Right, but I mean, a simple one, just from you people, saying, new stuff that's come out, we want to reassure the folks that everything is all right with our drinking water.
Well, the town participates in those public meetings at the same time as the state is here. And I can assure you, our water systems and our water supplies, we have two, Bowles Brook and Morgan Spring, are both contaminant free.
And what is the process in the future? Is this going to get ever fixed by nature itself? Or are we going to have this problem for eternity?
It may be eternity.
Maybe eternity?
We have, we have found, originally, that the determination was that PFOA would slowly break down in the soils and in the water. But we're finding that that has not been the case. It doesn't appear to be breaking down as rapidly as everyone thought. So yes, this is likely to be with us for a long, long time.
Are we still getting polluted more from something else than bringing in new PFOAs on soil, or?
From what we understand, that is not the case. That most of the contamination that we're finding, there are, there are hundreds of PFAS contaminants, PFAS, PFAS contaminants. There are two that are related directly to the ChemFab process. And these are the two that we are finding, continually finding in Bennington. So it appears to be one source so far, and that is the ChemFab site. And we'll see, obviously, they are making findings in Shastberry now. There are findings further to the south and to the east of Bennington, some that we may not be able to reach with our municipal water. So it's, it's going to be a continuing problem, and it's going to be with us a long time.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could just jump in for a sec. Yeah, Mike, the, those chemicals, those PFAS chemicals colloquially are called the forever chemicals, which gives you an idea how long they might persist in the environment. And secondly, as far as those public hearings that Stu mentioned, I think they were pretty well publicized, because, because I, I attended them, and they were very, very well attended. So the word is getting out there.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else from the public? All right, anything else from the board?
Yeah, the town water report for town water, where is that available?
The.
The town water report for town water.
There's a quarterly report that I believe, or that we provide to the public as part of our requirements. I'd have to check to see whether that stays online for a period of time, but that's how we generally release it. We also do a mailing through postcards when the report is available, so that people can contact us to get that information.
I remember seeing that. I just wasn't sure if that was available on our, our site or not.
Jonah is saying yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Then let's vote on the motion on the floor. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, or abstentions? We are unanimous.
And Tom, I'm going to circulate this for your signatures. There are three, three places to sign. I think one only requires the chair, two require all board members.
And while we pass that down the table, we'll move on to the manager's report.
Boards and commissions?
Boards and commissions openings. Thank you. It's that time of year again, every spring, where we discuss what open seats are on our various boards and commissions. I'll run down the list for you now. We have the Community Policing Advisory Review Board. We have two positions open. The Development Review Board, two positions open. The Energy Committee, three positions. Historic Preservation Commission, one position. Housing Authority, we have a one five-year term, and one open on a one-year term. The Planning Commission, we have two positions open. The Bennington County Regional Commission, one position open. To apply for these positions, you need, just send a letter of intent or interest to Stu, and he will forward those along to us, at which point we will call everyone in for interviews, and appoint people to these boards. I do encourage people, if any of these are of interest to you, this is an incredibly valuable way to serve your community. We cannot do the work that we do without the people that are doing the work on these boards. It is very, very important to the town of Bennington that we have people step up and take these positions. So if anyone has any questions on those, I'm sure they could reach out to Stu. And where, Stu, could they find specifically what each of these commissions do?
The annual report contains a description of each of the, of the boards and commissions, what they are expected to do, and it also describes the terms as well.
Okay.
Anything else from the board on that?
Clark?
Yeah, I echo what Tom said. It's real important that people get involved. You know, it's our town. We got to get involved. One of the things I was wondering, I don't know if this is the time, but I think I had a brief discussion with Jeannie about the idea of reappointments to these boards. Folks up for reappointment, maybe appearing before us to go back over their accomplishments, or what they hope they can continue to accomplish with a reappointment. I don't know if that's something we can talk about at a later date, but that's what I think we said we'd consider, as these vacancies or reappointments came about.
I'd just like to reiterate what Clark said. The idea that some of the folks on this board have not met some of the folks that have been serving in, in multiple terms on those boards. In theory, we, this board, maybe not the current board, but this board at some point took responsibility to appoint those folks. It might be good for us to put a face to a name if they're up for reappointment. And then the other question I have, since I have the floor, and I'll steal it for a second, I wonder if we can talk about what the motivation was behind liaison on certain boards and commissions and not others. And that's just because in my experience on the board, they, that, that plan was set in place, so I don't know what the thinking was. And that doesn't have to be discussed tonight, but I'd like to know more about it.
I thought there had been five Select Board liaisons, and now there's only three. Why did the other two groups get dropped off? What, didn't the Rescue Squad and the BBC used to have liaisons?
And they still do, but they are not a board or commission, they're not a town board or commission.
Oh, okay. A question on the liaison again. I don't believe the Energy Board, Energy Committee came in at all during the past year. And I think that's the first time since they restarted five or six years ago, they weren't invited in. So if they had a liaison, I would think we would want to give this group of volunteers an opportunity to come talk to the rest of the board and the public. And it goes back to, do we really need a liaison? Would we be better off trying to go to different board meetings, each of us throughout the year? If we hear something, we could come, you know, in other businesses, and say, I went to a committee, and this is, this is a concern they have. If it's regular business, that's fine. But I just don't really see a point in the same person sitting with the same same person sitting with the same board all year, especially when we don't have five minutes once every three months to say, I met with my board and committee over the past three months, here's basically what they're doing if they have a big concern, share that. We don't share anything.
I will say that in the liaison positions that I've held, they definitely seem to appreciate having a consistent point of contact on the board. It's also true that it, they're, the liaison is not generally called on all that often. Usually, that would be indicating that there's a problem of some sort, and most of these boards do manage to handle these things themselves, although they may request their liaison to get some information from Stu or to, you know, things like that. But I believe most of these meetings are open to the public, so you're perfectly welcome to go to any of them that you wish at any point in time. I do think they appreciate having a regular point of contact on this board, somebody that they know who to email, and that, that'll get done.
Tom, if I could follow up on that?
Sure.
So I happen to be the liaison this past year for the Energy Committee, and I, I believe that I had the opportunity to bring a couple of very small sort of focus questions back from the Energy Committee, and they were answered, and that, that committee is better off now that they have that direction. I was also able to help the Energy Committee sort of maneuver through process as it relates to silly little things like payables. I wouldn't have needed this board for that, but they were a little bit, you know, lost in terms of how they should, you know, spend moneying, you know, appropriately. So we pointed them in the right direction for that. So when we don't hear from them, it, I think we should hear from, from these folks more often, but a lack of hearing from them doesn't mean that there's any problem or anything bad going on. It means there was nothing really for them to put in front of us. And I think that the liaison role in my two years on this board has been useful to the organization that I was liaison for.
Clark?
Yeah, and keeping with what Ed, or Ed just said, you know, I find that I'd sit at these meetings, and they would discuss things that crossed over to things that we were already thinking of or involved with. And, you know, rather than reinventing the wheel, I was able to say, hey, this committee or this section, staff section in town is working on that very problem, maybe you need to pick up the phone and call so-and-so. Or more importantly, be able to go to so-and-so and say, you know, I was at this liaison meeting and they're concerned, or they had questions about this. Is that something that you'd be able to help them with? So, you know, although we, we aren't, you know, a functional member of these organizations, but having liaison there is, is just that, it's an unencumbered set of hands and ears that you, you can kind of breeze the skids in both directions.
I think that I was able to stop some things from, from being, some efforts from being very much duplicated in my experience, so I, that was certainly worthwhile.
Anything else from the board? Anything from the public other than sign me up?
We'll all jump at once.
All right, well, thank you very much. We'll look forward to your letters of interest. Now, the manager's report.
Yes, thank you. I have one action item this evening. The town has been selected to receive a 25% matching grant, total of $70,625, to help us replace our 22-year-old loader. The new equipment will be obviously more energy efficient, less polluting, and there is requirements that we scrap the old equipment and, and in fact, document that we have done so. So in order for us to accept this grant, you need to authorize the manager to sign the grant award, which is a participating cost award. The total cost for the loader is somewhere in the range of $260,000. I think we have two bids that have come in on that, but this will reduce our cost and the impact on the town budget. And we, when we buy these major pieces of equipment, we do borrow the money over a period of seven to eight years, depending on the life of the equipment. So it's, it doesn't impact the budget in, in the manner one might expect. But this will be very helpful, and I'm looking for a motion to authorize the manager to sign.
Do I hear that motion?
For point of discussion, I would like to make that motion, but I do have a quick question for the manager once the motion is on the floor.
Very good, second. Clark, thank you. All right, questions from the board? I'll start with Ed.
Thank you. Is scheduled to be replaced this year, does that mean that we're saving this $70,625 out of capital expense?
It's actually reducing the amount we need to borrow. So there is a savings, but it's a very small amount because we're taking this money out over eight years.
I gotcha. So we're, we're in effect saving this year's payments of the $70,000, give or take, up or down?
Yes, that sounds good.
I'm, I'm trying to show the, each other and the public that we're not spending money that we thought we were going to have to. Did I make that?
That's correct.
Did I make that point?
That is correct.
Thanks. That's all, Tom.
So Mr. Herd, question on, on this piece of equipment, one of my other jobs I do is a lot of people are running into this Build America, Buy America stuff, these vehicles that we're bidding on, and these American-built things, you know, not those Komatsu's from Asia or anything like that. These are American pieces of equipment.
I can't answer that question, Clark. I don't have the bid documents in front of me, but we are, we are meeting the requirements that the state places on these bids. I don't know whether they're as strict as you are outlining. Some, some bids are, where federal dollars are involved, but in this particular case, I'm not sure that that is the case. But we are, we are going to meet all of the requirements the state requires.
Trying to see in terms of, as we all know, these, this tariff wars, all of a sudden, is this $70,000 won't, won't help us sort of situation? That's what I was concerned about there. Are we running up against that with the bid process? By the time the bid's completed, are we looking at a foreign-made piece of equipment, is going to cost us considered?
We, yeah, the bids, we have the bids are in. So those, those documents, those, those bids are in place and will not be changed. So that's all I can tell you. I mean, I, that's handled by the Department of Public Works, and they respond to me.
Yes, maybe we can check with RJ and just, just in case, if, because it's my experience with, as you know, government contracts. Yeah, we got the bids in, we got everything, but by the time it comes to write the check and make the delivery, you know, we've got another.
Well, if you, if we order it now, or wait five minutes, or wait 10 minutes, or wait 10 months, or, or hurry up, there might not be, but there might be a tariff.
Right. I understand that, that's the thing too. You're absolutely right. If we're lucky, we'll get them.
Do you know if there's an expiration on the bids that came in, or is that kind of just, we don't know?
Most bids, most bids are held for 30 to 60 days.
Okay.
Jim?
Only a, a quick question. This is a diesel emission reduction grant, cleaner, more efficient piece of equipment. I, I can assume that there's probably some operating cost savings too that may not be specified, but.
Well, you may assume that.
It may, it's likely that it would use a fair bit less diesel.
I'm, I'm assuming that that's true.
Given that it's old and inefficient.
All right. Okay, so, all those in favor of authorizing the manager to accept the grant, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are unanimous.
Thank you. And just a couple of quick announcements here. There is a commemorative event coming in April, April 18th and 19th of this year. There is a nationwide initiative which will celebrate, commence the celebration of our 250th birthday of the United States. It's called Two Lights for Tomorrow. And municipalities, residents, all are encouraged to place two lights in an upper window, signifying the two lights that were part of the Paul Revere, Henry Wadsworth Longfellow poem, a "One if by land, two if by sea." And place those lights in the upper windows of your home or your office to join in this commemorative event. We plan to, at the town offices, participate, and I know Joan has been working as part of his efforts on the 250th to get the word out and to get this townwide to the extent possible. But I did want to announce that we are participating as a municipality, and we encourage everybody in the community to do so. We are also very fortunate to have been able to reallocate or relocate the allocation of $200,000 that we had received as a grant for the Depot Street Bridge project to the Mount Anthony Bridge project. This is a bridge project up on Mount Anthony Road. Originally, we had hoped to do this project totally in-house, and the $200,000 that the state is allowing us to reallocate to this project will in fact help us do this project and potentially save us in the range of $100,000 in the highway budget for the coming year. So that's great news. I just wanted to let you know that it's a big savings for us. Unexpended monies on the bridge project will go into the bridge reserve, and because we have other bridge projects that will be forthcoming, as many of you know, and you've probably been waiting to hear, the Route 9 Bridge by Miller's Toll, the contract has been let for some $3 million, something in that range, I can't remember, but it will in fact use every dollar of our current bridge reserve, 300-some-odd thousand, as we pay the our 5% share of that particular project. So building a bridge reserve has, has been helpful to us. I think the project on Route 9 came in a lot higher than the state expected. They in fact bid it a second time, and still the project came in higher than they anticipated. Some of that may be related to some of the uncertainty that we're now feeling in the various materials markets with, with the various comings and goings of tariffs. But nonetheless, we currently have the funds available to pay for our share there. This will allow us to begin to rebuild that reserve going forward. And then the last piece I have here really relates to the select board listening sessions. We were waiting for the new board to be formed, and I will wait for your direction as when we schedule those listening sessions. We have been typically looking at the third, I think at the third Wednesday of a given month, every other month, and I'll wait for your direction. You folks may want to talk about that at the next meeting as to how we're going to do. And then the last thing, I did add a review of the project list, which was developed for ARPA in 2021. It's a rather extensive list, and I know it's been raised here at various meetings about how we intend to go through these projects, how we intend to fund them. I tried to put in context at least the one project that has been mentioned here several times, the Community Rec Center, where there were some estimated $500,000 at one time required to upgrade that facility. We have been working on that continuously over the last several years, and we are down to just the one HVAC issue developed in the locker rooms adjacent to the pool. So just to let you folks know that these projects are out there, that we're, we're going to be knocking them off as we move along. There are some big ones that most likely will require bonding, will require approval of the voters before we proceed, and those will be brought to you in a timely fashion. So just as last week, I think you heard, or last meeting, you heard about the sand filter at the wastewater treatment facility. That will be going before the voters next March. So I think that's it.
Starting with the bridges. I think at the budget meeting in January, we talked about Mount Anthony and Murphy Road, putting $169,000 for those two.
Yes.
But looking at my ARPA list from 2021, said Mount Anthony by itself would be about $400,000. Now, I understand we may have savings, but that 400 has gone up probably in three years?
Actually, when we moved to bring a, an experienced concrete person on board last year, we are now able to do a lot of the bridge repair and replacement work in-house. The estimate that you had several years ago was from a private bidder of what it would cost to do that bridge. I believe we had projected about $119,000 doing it in-house, where we would use our own labor and equipment, and the materials would be the, the cost that we would face. So yes, there are savings, we are finding savings by having that individual in-house, creating a bridges division, so to speak, within the Department of Public Works, and it is proving fruitful, as you will see in this project, and you will see it also in the Murphy Road project.
So you think with the $200,000 and the $169,000, we can do them both for $369,000?
I think we can do them for less than that.
Okay, good. No, I just wanted to check. And as far as the ARPA list goes, I think we need to get this on the next agenda. I don't question the work and the time the town staff and employees put into it. I question why we as a board haven't put it on that wall and had our officials tell us what order these projects need to get done. And there's a couple, I think, you know, when I read the list in 2021, they sounded like they were on their last legs. I mean, these are tens and tens of millions of dollars worth of work, and we need to know if we're going to have to go out to bond on a couple of them within the next six or seven years. We've got more coming up right behind them. And I'm just saying, just put, you know, the basic stuff that I've been reading up here, so the board and the public's aware, and whoever works on this with you, Stu, should be able to tell us the order. These costs aren't going to come down, and, you know, when I was looking, $7 to $8 million in early 2022, if that has doubled by now, and that's just one of the projects, that's a big one, but all of these bonds are going to add up for everybody who pays water and sewer. We have to do the projects, but that's why I try to communicate to the public as we get involved in new projects and programs. You need to be aware of how much money we're going to have to pay for this critical infrastructure. And I think we as a board owe it to the public to, to explain this to them, just show them what the projects are.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, are we still on the manager's report?
Yep.
So I just have one comment that we don't need to delve into tonight, but regarding listening sessions, we're a year into that initiative, and I would like to set the key performance indicators. I'm very interested to know what makes it, our, our initiative successful, and what this board should be doing to make them more successful, and, and on that initiative, I just can't tell. So I'd like us to explore that further.
Yeah, actually, that leads me to the upcoming agenda, and I would suggest that we actually put that on the agenda for the next meeting so that we and the public can discuss that. I think that would be the best way to handle that.
Upcoming agenda?
Excuse me, is the town manager's report open for?
We typically don't take public time.
Well, it's an agenda item, isn't it?
I'll be bringing, I'm going to bring that up in other business anyways, but.
I just got a question. Could the ARPA money have been used for what Stu just said? Bonds are going to be coming up to vote on the different things. Could we have used that $3.5 million instead of going out to bond for new money on the project that you just mentioned?
Sure. We could have, but if you recall, in 2021, the select board conducted very, very open public meetings, took, took input from the community, from our staff, and essentially rated the projects of importance to the community. And the two projects they were, that we are funding with ARPA funds, the Ben High Project and the Skate Park, were the two that were the highest in, in the ranking. And so those are the two projects that we undertook with those monies.
But what Ms. White said for the last umpteen years over and over and over again then was right. That money could have been used to pay off some of the things you just mentioned that we need to do, and we wouldn't have had to go out for a bond, correct?
But yeah.
Actually, I'm not certain of that because these monies had to be committed in some fashion by 20, the end of this year, 2025. I'm not sure that we would have been able to get to a bond vote. We're still in the design phase on the. We're still in the design phase on the sand filter. I'm not sure we would have been able to get that project done in a timely fashion.
I just wanted to make that clear, that in the future, I think that you guys ought to let the public weigh in more on the special projects that you all choose, especially if we get another gift from God or the government of $300, $3.5 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, upcoming agendas, we have the listening sessions. I have not yet received the list of things that we do every, on a regular basis, every year.
Yes, I don't have, I don't have much in mind. I think we should discuss the liaison positions, since that has been raised tonight, and if, as Nancy has asked, we want to put these projects out to the public once again, and just have a very brief discussion of them to keep them fresh and in everybody's mind, we can do that.
Yeah, just a couple of things to Nancy's comments and Stu's suggestion about those large capital projects. I know you probably have had these discussions around budgeting, but it might be helpful to frame some of those large upcoming expenditures that we know are on the horizon in the context of how the town generally handles those things. There are things that come up in every municipality that has that kind of infrastructure, and towns have capital budgets and programs and integrate those budget forecasts into the annual budgets. And it might be helpful, just instead of, to just list them, to explain how the expenditures are handled over time.
Now, there are going to be bonds, multiple.
I think either about a month ago or six weeks ago, previous meeting, there was discussion of inviting the Chamber of Commerce, BRC, the BBC, some community development organizations to come and give a brief presentation and an update on their work for the new board. I personally would find that very valuable, so maybe that can also be featured on the next agenda.
Certainly check into their availability.
Just to put a flag out there for one project I know that's coming up for discussion, there's a committee that's been working on the extension to the Riverwalk down through the Village Cemetery to connect to the Headwaters Park. And I think that, I think there'll be a request to present on that in the near future.
Down by Hanaford?
Kind of the other, the other end, from the downtown eastern end of the current Riverwalk, kind of heading south.
I guess I'd like to find out where, if the plan is still to use, I don't know, $350,000 for the bike path with our local match to go with the $2 million grant?
I think we should maybe get the item on the agenda before we debate it, and see what the proposals are.
I don't know if that's the...
The pathway projects are proceeding.
Okay, anyone else?
I have a question. Again, maybe number 11 would be better than this. You know, we're discussing agendas and how things are presented. One of my concerns or interests would be to reorder how we actually conduct the meetings here in terms of, I know a lot of people are concerned about how long they run and so forth, the idea of making it, almost flipping it, get all the town business done before a lot of the other presentations by external organizations come into play. So, I don't, that's kind of under other business or upcoming agenda, but I think we should seriously discuss how the meetings proceed and are organized.
Tom, if I could, when you're ready?
Thanks.
You're ready for me to comment on that?
Yep.
Yeah, I just want to follow up to what Clark said. I think that looking at this and the time allocation is a super-good idea. I would be concerned about the idea of exactly flipping the way that Clark suggested, because oftentimes, the presenter is a guest, and we wouldn't want that guest to be waiting for us when we got delayed on something that was out of their hands. So, I would just say that, you know, let's all think about that out of the box. But I would like us to work on this, the way that this agenda is built and the way that it's implemented.
So, it feels like we're in other business now. So, let's, Nancy, do you have anything for other business?
Oh, yeah, quite a bit. We had other business on the agenda for decades. Two meetings ago, without it being on the agenda for a discussion by the board, the public, the previous chair renamed it, and I see it's back as other business on the agenda. Is it going to stay other business?
I have no plans to change it at this time.
So, we're keeping it at other business?
I have no plans to change it at this time. I'm not saying that something might happen in the future.
What do you, what do you know?
But I think, I'm okay with it being called other business.
It had been brief select board announcements for the past two meetings, so what do you see it as being going forward?
It's the chair's prerogative, and at this moment, I'm inclined to call it other business.
Other business?
Unless I change my mind at some point, but I don't expect to.
Well, I'm not sure the chair can change their mind by themselves, because seven of us are elected.
Well, this is an agenda, and it is part of the chair's and the vice chair's job to write the agenda.
Well, then, I'll move on to number two. I think it was two years ago where the chair announced that citizens could no longer ask the manager a question after manager's report. Now, this had been allowed and encouraged for decades. There is no reason, if a voter or taxpayer comes in with a question after the manager gives the report, why a citizen shouldn't be able to ask a question.
Okay.
So, I'm asking that citizens are able to ask questions again.
I allowed it this evening.
I'm sorry?
I did allow it this evening.
Okay, well, but I just think we need to be clear and on the same page, so that if somebody wants to come in, they don't come and wait two hours, only to be told, "Sorry, you can't ask a question."
I would encourage people, though, to contact the manager directly. They could get their answers more quickly that way.
Next, on the town website, there's a place where citizens can email the select board, and people are encouraged to do that. Joan, make sure we get the emails. We've never discussed a single email in the year that I've been on the board, so I don't really understand the purpose of saying, "Email the board." I think most people probably think we're at least talking about it, but we don't. So, how do you, how do we want to handle this?
We discussed an email tonight.
I'm sorry?
We did discuss an email tonight that we received from the public. Correction to the minutes.
But in the past, we haven't, and I mean, all the ones that we've gotten have been fine. Some have been very informative. I think the public would have benefited by hearing them or posting them on the town website, so people can see them.
Well, any communication with the board is a matter of public record, but I kind of see those more as being a benchmark in terms of if we're seeing certain things coming up over and over and over again, that definitely should be something that the board should discuss. So, if we see a pattern forming, I think that information is useful. And I just, I think it's a useful tool for the people to be able to express their views to all of us if they're not able to make it to a meeting for public comment. But if people do want to see those emails, they're, they can be made.
Well, and I also think that any member of this board could mention at this point on the agenda that they want to make reference to an email that was received by the public. We did receive one that fit into a different agenda item, so we took it up then. But if I saw an email come through that, the portal that Nancy is referencing, that I felt needed follow-up and discussion on this board, I think I would bring it up during other business.
Well, you know, I bring up a lot in other business, and if I added the emails on, I think it's important for people to know that we don't discuss them. If I was emailing the board, I would think that you would at least be talking about it, so I want people to know we don't discuss them. Another request. If a town official is required by law to post a notice in the Bennington banner, I'd like each of us on the board to get the copy of the notice at the same time, if it, if it has to do with something the select board is going to deal with. Would that be a problem?
Usually do get copies of notices that are published on behalf of the board.
Well, there was an issue last summer. We had a pretty critical agenda item. I didn't know that a notice had been in the banner three weeks earlier that had important information we should have had. I don't know if anybody else read it in the banner. It never came in our packet.
I don't know which someone that was, so I can't speak to it, Nancy, but we'll certainly make an attempt to make sure that you get all the notices that go out on behalf of the board.
A warning for an item that the public, I'm sorry, a warning for an item that the board is taking up is typically included in the packet for the meeting that the board will be taking it up.
Well, this, this was about the night we found out Shire's came in, and Rutland Community Housing, or two groups from Rutland, were taking over Shire's, and it was about a $15,000 grant. Well, to me, it wasn't about the grant as much as finding out the two groups from Rutland were taking over Shire's housing.
I guess I want to stand corrected and say that when this board can take no action on something, it would be a question as to where it belongs on the agenda, if at all.
Right.
So, I just put that out there for us to be aware of.
But that was, that was a grant that this board considered.
But somebody from the town office had put a notice in the banner three weeks before that, and there was information each of us on the board should have read. It would have tied to that meeting.
So, Stu, you'll make sure that we're informed on those things in the future? Thank you.
Yes.
And last, it used to be, and a lot of towns in this select board still do it, when the voters choose people to fill the seats that are up on the select board, the winners start right at the next meeting. I don't know how long ago it switched in Bennington, so they have to wait a month?
It was actually a charter change that was made several years ago. It might have been just five years ago, it might have been before that, that board members take their seats, all elected officials take their seats, April 1 of a given year, and that is by charter.
Then I'd like to know, I'll look, I have, I don't remember us ever voting on that. That would have been citizens voting, right?
The people approved the charter amendment, the legislature approved the charter amendment. It is now part of the charter. We are unique in that regard. You are correct.
So, in four years and eight months, we might be discussing that again.
Yeah. Okay.
Sarah, anything?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Jim?
Sure. I just wanted to let everybody know, I was recently appointed to the State Workforce Development Board. I had their first meeting today at the reconstituted board, general overview of statistics, and it was quite interesting. But I would say, one of the reasons that I agreed to that appointment was to make sure that we had pretty good representation, or some representation, from southern Vermont. It was probably a good thing, because I think there's four of us who could be characterized of the 27 as being from southern Vermont. Very generous with it. Although Michael Harrington, the Commissioner of Department of Labor, certainly has some connections in the area. And then, just, I just wanted to do a quick shout-out to the whole arts community in Bennington. I was really impressed with the, the list of events coming up, especially that Bennington Theater and the Monument Arts and Cultural Center put out recently. Really pretty impressive to have that kind of cultural resource in a town like Bennington. And special kudos to the Monument Arts folks for great production of South Pacific that saw last week. It really was outstanding, so congratulations all around.
Ed?
Thank you. A couple of very quick things. First of all, congratulations to our new leadership, and thank you for stepping up. Many of you have heard me say this over the years, those who can serve should, and I am grateful of your service. To those who choose, who are interested in serving or put their hats in the ring and are not, stay in the ring, because leadership should change. I'm a firm believer in that. The second thing that I want to mention is a little bit related, and that is that the chair and vice chair are responsible for the seating arrangement in this room. And I don't know that it's important to this board, but when I was first year, I had not yet solved my hearing problem. I have since solved it. But sitting where Jackie is was tough for me the first year. So, I would just say that, to be kind to a new board member, if she's interested in moving closer, I would sit out on the end, because I did solve my hearing problem with technology. So, but those small things are, I remember, being a bigger deal than it may appear, and Jackie may not care at all. Just consider that, gentlemen, if you would.
Thank you.
Hi, excuse, excuse me. So, you know, the one thing that I think was a point of contention in our last session, and I really would like to have other business define, you know, let's say what it consists of, or what can be used, that category applied to, so that we're not getting into either past agenda items or non-agenda items, and that, you know, we can be more focused and still be on the right, right side of various statutes and rules of order activities. And as anyone knows me, I'm all about people speaking up and being heard, but we got, we got to make sure that it's done in the best way possible, in the most effective way possible.
Maybe some guidelines from chair, vice chair, town staff could help us in the right direction there. I agree with Clark. I think that if we knew what our, what our parameters are, it would help us a lot in all the things that we talk about.
Isn't it self-explanatory, other business? It's where people on the board bring up something. It could be a citizen contacting. It could be a project or program ongoing we haven't had an update on. I mean, that's how the select boards have used it for decades.
I think it would be a good idea to have some, some...
Thank you. I guess I have three quick things. First, congratulations to the new chair and vice chair. Second, I appreciate the consideration for my budding experience on the board. I do not have any hearing problems. I'm a little colorblind, but...
I...
But then, the thing I actually wanted to share is that Vermont Green Up Day is coming on May 3rd, this year sponsored by Lundgren Subaru, I believe. So, on May 3rd, that's a Saturday, you can head up to Subaru and get little green trash bags, and it's a great way in Vermont that we come together and all show that we care about our community, help pick up the trash. Just pick an area of your own street and collect the rubbish that you find there. You can just leave the bags on the street, and folks come through and pick those up. For more information, you can go to greenupvermont.org.
And I have noticed that the trash seems to be particularly bad this year. I don't know if anyone else has made that observation, but there's certainly, we could fill some garbage bags. All right, we have need for an executive session to discuss contracts. We will not be taking any action immediately following. Could I have a motion, please, to enter executive session?
Tom, moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Good night, all. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.